Okay, let's get started. Don't forget to silence your phones, having said that, maybe I better do it as well. Do you have anything for us that goes to Mr. Curran, any documents or anything like that that you wish to share? Anything else that might make noise, phone, laptop, tablet, please silence it? We will, speaking of silence, we'll begin prior to the invocation and the pledge, with a moment of silence for William Mack Isom, who was killed a year ago today by a drunk driver. I'm not going to say allegedly because that's just what happened. And also, a moment of silence for Ken Wenzel, longtime member of this board, for whom the Finance Committee Room is aptly named. After that, if you wish to join us in the invocation, which will be done by Commissioner Majerik, or the pledge by Commissioner Yarborough. If you wish to join, please rise. You don't have to, but if you wish to, please rise. Now, we will maintain a mode of silence for Mr. Isom and Mr. Wenzel. Thank you. Again, if you wish to join us in the invocation or the pledge, please feel free to do so, Michael.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today as we gather for this meeting, seeking your guidance and wisdom. Under our plans and agendas to you, we trust that you will lead us in the right direction, guide us towards wonderful outcomes. In your holy name, Lord, we pray, amen.
Thank you for this opportunity.
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Bow.
Here.
Curran.
Here.
Freely.
Present.
Harrison.
Here.
Eifelman. Majerik.
Here.
Ah.
Here.
Pitchford.
Here.
Walraff.
Werfall.
Here.
Yarborough.
Present.
Elliott.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have ten present, two absent.
Thank you. We need to approve the minutes from last week when we were out at the MSU extension.
I'll make the motion to approve the meeting.
Move by Pitchford, is there support, supported by ah, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, minutes are approved. Madam Clerk, I understand we have some communications.
Yes, you received two communications, one, a resolution from Aunt Tednagan, County Board of Commissioners, and opposition to Senate Bill 299, Senate Bill 300, House Bill 4479, and House Bill 4480, which would impose statewide regulations for implementation of and maintenance of septic systems, received on July 19th. An email from Cornerstone Community Engagement Director Ashley Butler, inviting the BOC to the Cornerstone Alliance and Special Light as they hold a facility tour and press conference regarding the move to to and growth within Benton Charter Township on Tuesday, July 25th, from 1:00 to 2:00. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you. We have a presentation now, broadband presentation. Brian?
Yeah, members of the board, as it's been noted, we have Terry here from MEC, so Midwest Energy and Communications. Terry's going to speak with you all about some exciting news. The state of Michigan has given a tentative award to MEC for the rollout of broadband construction, which will cover a huge portion of Marion County. Now, I use the term tentative, they still have to go through the final steps of the grant contract. So, while I say tentative, I say it somewhat with a grin. We're confident that the grant is going to be authorized, and that they'll be moving forward with a major construction project. It is worth noting that there is local match involved. The Marion County has pledged up to $4.5 million towards the broadband construction. We have numerous local units that have also pledged contributions towards the project. We're going to get into that today. Terry will walk you through what's coming, where it's going to go, and then we will talk about how we finalize some of the partnerships between the local units, MEC and the state of Michigan. With that said, we'll go ahead and get Terry started. I'll ask Annette just to hang out for one second to make sure the volume has no problems.
Good morning. Everybody hear me all right? Thank you for having me today. I'm Terry Rubin-Taylor. I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Midwest Energy and Communications, or MEC. And today, we thought it was a good idea to show you what we're, who we are, what we're planning to do in Marion County, and see if there's any questions that we can answer at this time, and at least you know where we're at and what's going on. So, I'm gonna start with who we are. So, we are the rural electric provider in southern Michigan. We were formed back in the 1930s with the Rural Electrification Administration, and to get to all the customers out there who couldn't get electricity. So, we have a lot of customers, mostly in Cass, Van Buren, Kalamazoo, St. Joe County, some on the fringes of Marion County that we serve electricity to. And our vision has always been making sure rural communities are vibrant, relevant, sustainable. So, we don't focus on urban areas or even really small towns, we're more of the rural areas. We were formed by the farmers who couldn't get electricity, and that's always been our vision, is to support those rural areas. Our mission is fairly new, but really not. So, we deliver solutions and help people where others won't. So, we're not trying to overbuild somebody else, we're not trying to go in and compete directly. We want to go where there's a need, where people can't get the things they need. And right now, the biggest issue is broadband service. So, you get out in rural areas, those folks just don't have good internet service. And that's our mission, is to help rural people who need things that they can't get from other providers. So, just to show you, this is a map of all the rural providers in Michigan. But down here at the bottom, that's southern Michigan, that's us. So, we serve the southwest area over here. We also serve parts of Linaway County and down into Ohio and parts of Indiana. So, we're actually in three different states. We have 36,000 electric customers. And we also do propane service in the southwest district, so 8,000. And we're, about 10 years ago, we got into the fiber to the home business to help our electric customers. That was our original goal. We love to meet with our customers, find out what we're doing good, what we're not doing so good. And it always came back to broadband. They're like, you know, we just can't live here anymore if you don't do something about this internet issue. We have to work from home, we have to go to school. And so, we started into the business to do just what our mission said. And we completed the southwest district. So, we started in 14, we completed that in 19, we completed the southwest district in 21. And then, we're sitting there like, we have all these skilled people, we have all this infrastructure. It's very easily expandable, you know, what can we do to make it grow even bigger? And so, this is a zoom-in map. Green is our electric service territory. Green is our electric service territory here and here. And then, we bid in what was called the ARDOF auction, and the FCC come out, so they had a map, and said, here's all the unserved people. Tell us how much you, you know, you could do to build to these folks. And so, we bid in that, and we were successful. We won $37 million. But it is a $150 million project, so it's a small percentage of the total project. But because we can expand and add on relatively inexpensively, we thought it was a good model to add on to our current line business for internet. And so, when you look at Marion County, we've completed most of our construction in Marion Township, or Noco Township, Piceau Township, Baybridge Township is complete. So, virtually everything that we have commitments for in Marion County is complete for our ARDOF commitments. And so, realizing that the FCC's maps were terrible, we started working with Marion County and other counties to finish what's left. Because as you can see, there's these huge white areas out here that were not included in ARDOF, because the FCC at that time considered unserved. And so, we all knew they weren't served. All the people living there knew they weren't served. So, then we started looking at what we could do to make it better, and over years, number of years, finally got to the point where the maps are better, and the funding was there for this, the next opportunity, which, well, one quick, this slide seems like it's in the wrong spot or something, but this is our pricing model that we have for our customers. We try to be simple, straightforward, no hidden fees. So, it's two packages right now, $65 a month for 100 meg, $100 a month for a gig. And then, towards the end of the year, we'll be up to five gig for $200 a month, so three packages by the end of the year. And that's it. You get everything with, with everything. And most of our folks just have it or have it. We were just talking about hooking up new people, and we're hooking up around 300 to 400 new customers every month. So, this next grant opportunity came along called the Robin Grant. And I think the state picks up something they like, a word they like, and then try to make it an acronym, but it stands for Realizing Opportunities Broadband Infrastructure Networks. And it was a point-based grant system where you'd fill out these forms and tell them, like, first one is your financial wherewithal, so you fill out these forms, and if you got, you did everything you had, you got 10 points. And it was 250 points. So, we learned out of this process, with working with Marion County, Marion County, Cass County, that we got 234 points out of the 250. We think we were second out of all the applicants, there was a lot of applicants. They had $238 million, they got requests for over a billion-dollar funding. And so, there's a lot of demand out there yet, but we feel good that we are one of the highest point getters, and we feel good that our project is going to be funded. So, in Marion County, this is what we went after in the Robin Grant. So, 5,256 unserved customers, so those are customers who are less than 20 by 3, 20 meg by 3 meg. They're unserved. To get to all those customers, we had to go past some customers who are considered served, they either have Comcast or some other provider. But it's 433 miles to get to all those folks. And we estimate it's coming around $23 million that we're gonna spend in Marion County to be able to build all this mainline fiber and get those customers hooked up and streaming in Marion County. And this gets most of the rural folks everything virtually east of I-94. This is the map of all the Robin lines we have to build for this grant. So, there is the majority of the lines, the 433 miles are in Marion County. And you can see these townships down here, around Three Oaks and Delene, Barona, that's the big build-out area where we have to build out virtually every road. You can see some other scattered ones in the other townships that are kind of hit and miss, and all of Van Buren County's kind of hit and miss, but we lumped these all together into one big application for a total of 724 miles we have to build throughout these four counties. And so, like Brian said, we had commitments from Marion County, Cass County, Van Buren County, and 33 other townships pledged funds to help us so that our application was viable. And so, it was a big lift to meet with all those folks and to get those commitments. But it appears that it's gonna be very successful. And anybody has questions, jump in anytime, but this is what we got, letters of support, matching funds. Appreciate all the help from BC Bit and everybody at the county that helped us get all these. It was critical, as you can go back to that scoring system, community involvement, community efforts. We're a big point getter, and we needed all those letters of support to have a successful application. So, what's going on next? So, matching commitments, we had February 28th. Robin Grants were due on March 13th. The initial awards, which we were included in, came out in June. We're currently in the 45-day challenge period, which ends August 4th. And so far, we have no challenges. According, I talked to Ben Simon yesterday, there's no challenges anywhere in all states, I guess, for Robin right now. So, one of the concerns we have is that they, so they have $238 million, but they awarded about $260 million in the initial awards. So, they overfunded it, thinking that there'd be some challenges, and some things would get removed. So, if they don't get any challenges, I guess the bottom point getter is probably gonna drop off, I guess, I'm not sure, but assuming that. And then, final awards, we're expecting mid to late August. So, the question we always get from everybody, when am I getting, right? When am I getting, who's first? So, we haven't, we haven't put that out there yet. I don't know the answer to that question yet. We're waiting till final awards, we're 100% sure we know what we won and where we won. Because if there is a challenge, they could remove some addresses, not the whole application, but the whole, some address. So, if we put an address in there and they actually have service, they can say, oh, no, you can't put that one, take that one. We want to wait till final awards, we know exactly which addresses we have to build to before we start putting the schedule out, the plan out, and put it out to the maps that we have. And then, what's next, right? So, this is where it's kind of, we're not sure. So, step one, we believe, is getting a contract from IHI, the Michigan High School Internet Office. We'll get a template contract from them, they say, before the final awards are announced, we're thinking early August. I was going through the Michigan red tape right now. Then we'll give it to Darius and Ryan, and we'll try to tweak it or do whatever we need to, maybe it'll be perfect. We can just use that as a template and get our contract between us and Marion County set up. Once we kind of have that template, then we'll use that hopefully to go out to all the townships. And hopefully, everybody doesn't have to do a legal review, but they have to do what they have to do to make sure that they're covered. And so, most folks are using ARPA-funded funds to fund that. So, it will be, there'll be ARPA requirements along with the government. How to get us into money, how you gotta commit compliant, how you gotta do all these things to make sure that you're doing it right. So, that'll be the next step. We'll update our maps. We'll come up with a plan for who's getting built first, and a schedule, where we're gonna go, we haven't done that yet. It's gonna be based on engineering more than it is who pays the most, I think, because sometimes you have to just do it geographically. You can't just say, well, this guy didn't pay as much as that guy, so he gets to go first, you know, that works. It's probably not gonna be that, it's gonna be just logical, isn't it? But that's all I had. We would be happy to take any questions, anybody has, or how it's gonna work.
So, you're right, the questions that I keep getting are when? And so, Terry, I just wanted to kind of touch on, the Robin Grant has build-out deadline by 2026, correct?
That's right.
And I just want to highlight the fact that you guys have received the ARDOF funding, which is the Rural Digital Opportunity Funds, and a large portion of that within Marion County, you've already completed. But the build-out deadline for that was when?
Same day.
2026.
Yeah, so, so all that blue has to be built by 2026. And then, all this has to be built by 2026. So, the original blue was about 3,000 miles. We've got about 1,000 miles done. We felt pretty good about, and now we're gonna add 700 to that, so we're back up to 2,700 miles. So, yes, our construction is gonna have to ramp up to close to 1,000 miles a year, which when you convert that to a week, we're over 20 miles a week. And, you know, so we've been shooting for 15 miles a week, last week we got 17 miles. We're, construction's really rolling pretty good. And we're, we have commitments from material suppliers and contractors that they can ramp up to the 20 to 25 miles a week that we're gonna need for the next three years to get it all done. So, who's gonna get it first? We're still working on that one, yeah.
I think my point that I wanted to kind of highlight is that you guys are working quickly, and in some sense, a little ahead of maybe the curve as it relates to deadlines.
So, we're definitely working, so we've ordered some materials. Because we can't wait. Some materials take six months to get, we just can't wait. We're working with contractors. We told them to go ahead and start buying equipment, and people, whatever they gotta do, but we just can't wait. And we're gonna win some of this, probably most of this. We're very confident that we're gonna win it, based on what we've heard and what they've told us. So, even though, but we haven't started any real engineering yet, you know, so, but that's gonna start soon. It's probably gonna start next month, if we're gonna have everything done, all our permits and everything ready to go, so that we hit the ground running first of the year. And once in a while, in Marion County, we get winter. So, you know, first of the year could be March, right? So, it's a lot of, we're planning on doing most of it underground because of time constraints and whole permits take so long to get from AP. We would love to attach aerial, but sometimes we just don't have time, and so, underground goes faster, believe it or not. And it's not because construction fast, we can definitely build aerial faster, but you just don't have time to get permits in from the other homeowners. So, most of it is gonna be underground, we assume, I guess.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you done this before? Have you put in a community with broadband?
Yep, so, we currently have over 23,000 active customers. So, we did all of our electric there.
Thank you.
So, everything in Cass County, virtually done. We probably served 90% of Cass County. That's all done, that's been done for years. We started about 10 years ago, so we've been in the business about 10 years.
And the price that you show, what some of the things will be, are doable, those prices are.
Current prices, yes. And there's, we have, there'll probably be rate increases in the future, but we have no plans to increase rates in the next four or five years. So, matter of fact, I think part of the agreement is gonna be rate, no rate increase for the five, at least for three years, so. But yeah, our prices are simple and straightforward, and most people that go to us end up saving money from their current supplies, even if you ask. So, we don't do videos. We don't do any kind of TV of any kind. We give people a big site, and we let them do whatever they want with it. And so, if you wanna stream video, there's lots of options right now for streaming video. But we don't, we'll help you if you want. If you say, I like these five channels, we'll find the best option for you. We got people in the office that love helping folks figure that out. And we have some apps that you can type in, what channels you like, but we don't do any video. We do provide landline, phone service, if people are interested in that. We don't do a lot of those. But I think, he said he's got a phone service from us, because sometimes you don't have good cell coverage.
Yeah.
And so, some people want a landline for 911, whatever, but it's an actual landline that goes through the fiber. It looks like it's a landline, but we make it look like that, so it's a.
Thank you.
But yeah, it's a, it's a good product. We feel good about the pricing model we have. You get lots of protection from viruses and stuff. We also provide parental controls, so if you wanna shut your kids off, or you wanna limit things that can go through there, you have all the controls in the world, and we give that all to you.
Thank you.
What is the ACP Plus?
So, ACP is Affordable Connectivity Program from the FCC. And that's our terminology for ACP Plus, that's what we call it in our system. So, if you qualify for ACP, and you qualify through the federal government, that's how you qualify. We give you a price of $30, which then you get $30 from the government, so it ends up being free.
Oh, yeah, okay. I was curious.
Yeah, so if you qualify for the Affordable Connectivity, and then you qualify for ACP Plus, it's only $1. So, it helps, that serves 100 meg symmetric.
Ma'am. Oh, somebody else?
Yeah, 'cause I.
Yes, sir, and ma'am.
Just for residents that are gonna have questions, what is this build-out going to look like on the ground for just, you know, your average, ordinary person? Will they be having streets closed off as they're doing this install? Or is it all out of sight, out of mind?
So, I mean, you'll see, so we will have equipment on the side of the road. We won't block any roads. When we come to a road, we have to go under it, go bore under the road, so we won't trench any roads or anything like that. But, yeah, so where we can, they have these giant boughs, and they just knife it right in the ground. A big, so we put an inch and a quarter orange onto it, and then you'll just have later around edge that looks like home edge. And we'll put our name on it, and that's, it'll look very similar to what home company. And we're done.
My only want to say is BC Bit's been working with staff, and then also MEC, and then the township supervisors, and those who have tentatively committed funding. and then the township supervisors and those who have um, tentatively committed funding for the um, contract. And until we receive that contract uh, from the state for us to kind of look through, take it through legal, we're kind of in a holding pattern, but um, it is something we've been talking about and I just wanted to say publicly, cause I know I've had a few townships reach out to me and say, when's that coming? That we're in that holding pattern until we get that final award. But we are aware of it, we're working toward it, we're having conversation between staff and um, the uh, internet provider to make certain that we're all ready to hit the ground running to get those.
Yeah.
Sort of works through.
You know, if a customer goes in and puts their address in out here in our website right now, it's gonna say, sorry, you don't get service because we wanna wait until.
Right.
We're done and then it takes our mapping folks a little bit of time. But when we do it, it'll say, congratulations, you'll be connected in approximately just a half hour.
Yeah.
And then you can sign up, they, there's a hundred dollar fee uh, for every new signup. And a lot of people ask the question, well, I live way off the road. You know, I live half a mile, is, how, how much is buying gonna be? Well, it's a hundred dollars, so it's a hundred dollars no matter what. And a hundred dollars is a token fee to get people to connect, basically. Uh, but, so yeah, it's cost us way more than a hundred dollars to do that, but it's part of our, of business model and, and we're confident that it's, uh, we can do that and, and it makes it affordable for everybody.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, very informative and timely.
And uh, yes, if there's a follow-up questions, uh, Brian and me contact each other all the time. So we're happy to do this again once final word are, or once we have a plan, uh, we can certainly come back.
Well, we'll look forward to seeing you again.
Okay.
Thank you, Terry.
Yeah.
Uh, public comments regarding resolutions, just resolutions at this point? Do you have anything? I'll note that on the resolution ending in two-five-two, there was a slight amendation. Amendment, the fifth whereas, has a little change to it, nothing that changes the substance, nothing that affects the last paragraph, the operative part that starts therefore, or now therefore, be it hereby resolved. But one of the wherashes had a little adjustment, the Julie amendment, we could call it. And uh, right. With that in mind, is there a motion to approve the, yes sir?
Mister Chair, I, I would like to point out um, that the resolution two-five-two is an administration committee um, resolution. And the reason uh, that didn't stay as original is because we changed the language, very minor, like you said. But we have a second resolution that, and that is working on right now, that I would like the whole board to approve. And as soon as I have that in hand, uh, with your permission, I'd like to introduce that to the board and get that moved forward.
When do you think we'll have it?
For kind of right now.
It, it's the, it's the uh, resolution authorizing uh, phase three with Daniel B., our construction uh, management firm. And we were updated today from him and he can't move forward unless we do this phase three resolution. So that's why with your indulgence, I'd really like to get it done today if we could. Um, and, and that's working on it right now.
Does it have a number assigned at this point?
It does have a number assigned, we. Mac, it, it's one of these that there's major edits that are occurring, so we're, we're gonna make every effort to get it in front of the whole board today, but I'm not gonna promise.
Okay, cause I'm gonna have to break shortly uh, to head to court this afternoon. I have to change clothes, put on my cape and everything. But um, and corporate counsel's gonna need to approve it. Why don't we, for the time being and contemplation of this, um, since we haven't yet done anything with the consent calendar, Madam Clerk? Just been discussing it. Is there a motion to amend the agenda to add a resolution? Be great to have the resolution number, but not mission critical.
Once you get that number, I'll make that motion, please.
And, and that would be for the reasons stated by Commissioner Curran because of, of the need to uh, to move forward expeditiously with phase three of.
I'll give you their resolution.
Yeah.
Thought that'd be a resolution A two-three-zero-seven-two-six-three.
Okay.
Has to be read into the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. Sharon, do you need that number again?
A two-three-zero-seven-two-six-three.
Correct.
Okay, so the motion would be to amend the agenda, not the consent calendar, but to amend the agenda to add a resolution A two-three-zero-seven-two-six-three. Um, because we are amending the agenda from the board floor, we need at least a two-thirds majority vote of members present. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mister Chair.
Moved by Curran, seconded by Werfel, discussion. Want to briefly enunciate why we're doing this for the record?
Well, this, this resolution is similar to the uh, nine-one-one tower resolution as we had some edits. And so that's what is being done now. Annette addressed the first one, and if I may, I can, I can read uh, the edit that we made, the resolution ending in two-five-two, which is the one that is on the consent agenda.
Well, let's wait on that, we first have to amend the agenda and then when we get to the consent calendar, if, if we uh, move and approve the consent calendar, then you can reference what that change was in two-five-two.
Okay, okay. And well, regarding the one with Daniel B., it had to do with some of the dollar amounts, where the money was coming from. We wanted that put into the resolution, uh, so that's what's being done now.
Okay, so two-six-three is going to be working almost in tandem with two-five-two.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Um, we've got a, a, a motion and a second to amend the agenda for the reasons stated by the admin chair. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Curran.
Yes.
Freeling.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Majerik.
Yes.
Ah.
Yes.
Pitchford.
Yes.
Werfel, yes. Yarborough.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Mister Chair, you have ten yeas.
Thank you. Um, one just follow-up question, we've amended it to accommodate if needed. Is it mission critical to do it today versus a week from today?
In our opinion, it is.
Okay.
Um, because the update that we were provided today has a number of uh, projects that are ready to be bid, but without us authorizing phase three, Daniel B. and his, his crew cannot put them out to bid. So we don't wanna hold that process up any further, so in our opinion, yes, it is.
Okay, fair enough. Um, let's go to the consent calendar now, we'll deal with that, we'll deal with seven-two-six-three. Uh, we didn't have any public comments about resolutions. Um, we'll go there again just in case anyone changed their mind. Let's see, several people not standing up, so okay, uh, no public comments. And now consent calendar, we need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Moved by Pitchford, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Harrison, discussion.
Mister Chair, if I may, uh, resolution ending in two-five-two, the only language change we made to that resolution is in the fifth whereas, and we added after act architectural and engineering analysis. However, due to guidance from Motorola, the approval was done only at the committee level. In other words, we had authorized the expenditure of money, but it was not expended uh, for the company that we had hired. It's now going to be done by a different company, that's the reason for the change and that's the only change on that uh, resolution.
So that was in the way of background information, not changing the operative language in the resolution.
That is correct.
Corporate counsel.
I think that's fine, the decreto clause is what ultimately matters.
Okay, all right, everybody good with that? Madam Clerk, will you please call the rule?
Freeling.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Majerik.
Yes.
Ah.
Yes.
Pitchford.
Yes.
Werfel.
Yes.
Yarborough.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Curran.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Mister Chair.
Thank you. Ready?
No, sir.
All right, folks, we're gonna um, just have to circle back to that additional resolution. I'm going to have to, to cut and run to be where I need to be by one o'clock. I'll pass the baton to the vice chair and um, I'll queue by phone in about an hour. Thank you.
While we are doing that, we'll go around and get updates from the different committees. And I believe first on the list is finance. So Madam Chair of Finance?
Thank you. We had our meeting today and we approved our minutes, um, looked at the resolution that admin had just brought with the addition that was needed and agreed um, with that committee. And we had a presentation from Caitlin Sampson, who's our director of nine-one-one, or that, that's a good title, a fine title. Bring that skin, excuse me. Regarding the tower that's going to be placed, the Motorola Tower that we've been talking about for quite some time. And it's going to be at Lake Michigan, I'm sorry, at Bertrand.
The tower's not been determined of where it's gonna be located at, and that resolution is what was included in the consent.
Okay.
Agenda.
But she brought information to us and the change orders and all of that, so we can be up to date on it. And she met with the admin, admin committee as well as Doug James with her, so that it's going, you know, up the line. Um, and we had a presentation from our director of finance, Doug James. And I asked him if he would come to this meeting and explain to you all, what he explained to us in whatever, whatever depth.
What you, what you should have received or are in the process of receiving the email is um, an update for the general fund through the month of June.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, as I was. But, Chair, to see it, I wanna take a look at that. Appreciate it. Um, basically what I, what I did is I reported to the finance committee that through the month of June, um, the general fund is showing a use of fund balance of sixteen point five-nine-four million dollars. Uh, a year ago, it was nineteen point two million dollars, so we have two point six million dollar additional um, use, I'm sorry, a lower use in fund balance. Um, however, inside that, um, we are seeing the P C B settlement, um, which is giving us a favorable amount, a favorable um, result in the amount, in the amount of three million, five hundred fifty-five thousand dollars and change. Uh, we are also seeing additional um, expenditures, uh, which we have not recognized revenue for at this point in time of around seven hundred and seven thousand dollars having to do with uh, ARPA spending for broadband. When we factor, when we take that all into account, those items into account, um, we end up with a use of fund balance excluding those items of nineteen million, four hundred forty-two thousand dollars at this point in time. It's within a couple hundred thousand dollars of where it were a year ago. Um, spoke to them about the budget amendments and so forth that have happened, um, and that are ongoing. Um, or we will be amending for some, more time. Spoke to them about the, yes, the budget amendments that have happened um, over, over the course of the year versus the original budget, my apology, I'm trying to catch up here. Um, but I also talked to them as well about contingency, which is the final page and where it stands at the present time. We had originally a million dollar contingency at the present time through, a couple days ago, we were sitting at three hundred point one thousand dollars. Um, there's a list there of what has been, um, what has been transferred to other budgets from that contingency. So you're very aware um, of, of those, of those changes that have happened, okay?
It's okay, thank you very much. I thought it'd be better to do that because it is um, quite a, quite a bit of information, but we wanted you all to have it. And then um, in our um, committee, we had um, an information systems update from our director of I S, Chris Whiteheart. And they're working always, and then you all have some kind of bet of when the main or the uh, computer will be switched over to the new things and they're all there. And it, this has caused uh, the need to convince Ken Hoffren to come back in. People that helped build that system and kept making the security thing, so they're working to switch it over and it's someday, some point, I hope I'm, I'm still the one that will be able to report that it is done. And so because of the knowledge, you know, we were gonna go with the state of Michigan courts and all kinds of things over the years have happened. And so they're working mightily to, to come, but everything is in one room now, which is a, a plus. The new build and, and what is, what is there, and so they're steady working on it. And then we had two waiver uh, requests uh, from um, Jake Lydicker. Um, one was for uh, to Dell, which is uh, for rugged laptops and mounts for the sheriff's patrol vehicles. And the amount for that was one hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars. And it's not all the cars, it's, I don't know if it's about half of them or something, but we will continue working on that to keep um, every, all of our systems updated so they can communicate, communicate well. Whereas before, we were on all different systems, they did not go out for bids. The equipment that we have right now is from Dell and we're uh, happy with it and we're going to stay with that. And then the other one was Mall City Mechanical, um, a temporary relocation of levered condenser units. What happened is on the courthouse, the roof is being worked on, but they realized they needed a company with a prank, you know, what do you call it, would lift things that are on the roof so that they could work on it. And that was an additional expense we had not thought about, and that cost thirteen thousand dollars, and that's what we did. And that's our report, thank you.
Thank you for that report, are there any questions for the Chair of Finance? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Chair of Personnel.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. We also met this morning, um, we had a number of advanced step re, higher requests um, that we considered and approved. There were seven um, over the last several weeks. Um, it was very reassuring to us that uh, we're able to bring in some very talented people into key positions within the county. We also approved a resolution regarding a complement change for the road department. With this, they're converting the old um, labor grade and classifications to the county system for titles and labor grade, as well as adding two positions and reducing one position. So there's sufficient budget um, to cover all of those changes, and so we, we did approve that. We also had a monthly update from the Parks Department. Joe came in, spoke to us about um, volumes and revenue at the various um, parks and talked a bit about some of the projects that uh, they have in Hopper, and that was a good report. And then our chairman was with us for a period of time and we talked about the sequence and schedule of meetings for the county board and some of the considerations that are uh, under discussion. And that would conclude my report.
Thank you for that report, are there any questions for the Chair of Personnel? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Chair of Admin.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Uh, first in the C.
First in the CS this morning was Caitlin, our 911 Director. I appreciate the board's consideration in getting that resolution passed with the minor changes. She did go into detail again about the process. She also went to Finance and explained the process to you folks as well. So, I think between Brian and Caitlin, they've done a very good job of explaining the process and the need for this change order. We are certainly hoping that we don't need to use all the dollars in the change order, but it's there if necessary. And Admin Committee will be kept up to date on their progress. Next in the CS was Daniel Batiachi from Daniel B. Kind of went over where he's at in the process of getting a lot of the work done for us. That was the reason that he talked about Phase Three. The list that he gave us, really, there hasn't been any work done yet. It's, it all has been pretty much assessing, getting prepared to put items out for bid. And as we understand, the hangup is that he can't put it out for bid without the Phase Three authorization. So, that's what we're waiting on. And then we'll move forward. We did ask, I thought he gave us a pretty good report and a pretty good spreadsheet of what they're doing and then color coding it as to the status. We appreciated that. Plus, we added, asked him to add a few other items to that list so we can keep track of the dollars as they go along with the project. And then after that, we have a couple of resolutions or four resolutions for you. Any questions on the first two from anyone?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Committee Chair. The deferred maintenance list that you just referenced, the color coded spreadsheet, that's been forwarded to the full board. You all have a copy of it. So, take a look at it. It's in your email.
Thank you. Okay. We have a resolution ending in two five eight coming to you. This is from the Road Department. The federal government has improving access to service for persons with limited English proficiency. This was approved in two thousand. And it requires that each federal agency or any agency that receives federal dollars have such a plan. The Road Department put together a plan, submitted it to MDOT, and they have reviewed it and approved it. So, this resolution is for us to submit that plan to the federal government. Resolution ending in two six zero. This is to receive a grant from the state through the Homeland Security Division for the Sheriff's Department. It's in the amount of four thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. There is a one thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars in-kind match required. So, we okayed that. Resolution ending in two six one. This is for the Sheriff's Department to contract with Lake Michigan College for a resource officer, just like he does with the high schools. This is what he's doing with LMC. So, that resolution authorizes that. Resolution ending in two six two. This is to renew the phone contract with the Sheriff's Department with Global Tell Link. And I asked under Sheriff Chuck Height if he would explain this resolution to the full board. So, Madam Vice Chair, with your permission?
Thank you.
Yes, briefly, we've had Global Tell Link now doing businesses via PATH with us since two thousand and fourteen in the jail for inmate phones. They also do our jail management system. So, it's nice to have both. There's no issue between interoperability. This renewal is a standard renewal with an automatic two-year extension because what we would be doing is adding tablets to the jails. So, that's one of the new technologies that a lot of jails have gone to. We've visited a couple of jails that have it. Tellmate was a company that we had looked at possibly, have looked at and actually GTL acquired Tellmate. So, it's in that process. It's adding some technology that would take away from like the paper and any type of grievances and different educational information that can be put out there. So, it would be adding the infrastructure which they would put in. They've done a site visit to look at the wifi and what would be needed to be able to do those. So, the tablets would be one of the big changes and additions to the inmate phone system in the jail.
Thanks, Chuck. And that's what I wanted the board to hear was the addition of the tablets. Any questions? That's our report.
Thank you. Chair of the Admin Committee, are there any questions? I know you already asked, but I'll do it again. Questions for Admin? No. Thank you, Under Chair, for your update and Doug James for the update for Finance as well. Hearing no questions, we'll move on to Commissioner Reports. And Commissioner Bell, I will start with you if I may.
So, I attended the Takata, well, Twin Cats meeting and just a couple of updates. Takata is actually conducting interviews for their Director position. So, hopefully by our next meeting, they'll, you know, have a Director or, you know, have a, have applicants, you know, who are in consideration. And also, we've received updates on the many transit updates and projects that are going on in the Twin City area. And I also attended the CCAB meeting at the courthouse yesterday. And a highlight is KPEP is doing excellent. There are a lot more clients in that. There were a few earlier in the year, but that's picked up so far. So, that program is running strong. And we also received updates about, you know, the jail, the numbers of inmates we have in there. And we're not overcrowded just yet. So, shout out to, you know, our patrols, our sheriff deputies that are doing their job. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. Commissioner Harrison.
I attended the CEO Council last Friday and then also attended Kenny Wentzall's visitation last evening. That would conclude my report.
Thank you for your report. Commissioner Pitchford.
There was no SMCAA meeting this month because they're up at a conference in the upper part of the state. However, Ashley Slack, who is the deputy there, is stepping down from that position, which due to SMCAA bylaws and the way that they interact with the state, there has to be a contingency plan if something were to happen to the Executive Director. And she was actually in that contingency plan. So, we're going through a process now where we have to kind of restructure and think about how we meet those requirements. So, it's really good fruitful conversations, but it's, it's, it's a good thing to have that type of plan in place. This is just one of those instances where the person you think is going to take over goes in a different direction. You have to reassess them. So, keep us in mind as we're working through that.
Thank you. Commissioner Curran.
I have no report.
Thank you.
I attended the CEO Council last Friday also with Commissioner Harrison. We had a presentation from MSU, from Ryan, from Newago County regarding solar to the townships. So, it was very good.
Thank you. Commissioner Majerik.
Yeah, I attended Substance Use Disorder Policy Board, which is called SUDUP as an acronym. But it was yesterday and we basically went over the alcohol tax plan, which is PA two is funding, which it's called another acronym. And the revenue for, PA two revenue for, I'll go over just Marion County over though. We went over all the counties. We received three thousand, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, eighty-six cents. And we spent three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and nine in our behavioral health. And we have a carryover right now of six hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-three, which means we are saving money in that. And that should build our fund up over the next few years. In December, I just want to remind Brian that we have to sign our intergovernmental contract with them or else lapses. And that's my report.
Thank you for that report.
Oh, also, one more.
Sure.
They do a study in all of Michigan. And they go in and the liquor and the cigarettes and vaping and they test them at all the small stores to see who will sell to a teenager. Marion County is one of the highest in the counties that does not do that. Actually, it's been running around ninety to ninety-five. And they say if you're at eighty percent, which means twenty percent people buy. It's, you're, you're pretty bad. And this year, we were at ninety-eight. So, we're only at two percent, which took us to the top of not having any stores that do that.
Great. Thank you for that update. Commissioner Yarborough.
Yes, thank you. I would just like to let you all know that I attend Shattaland performances. It's through our Parks Department. And our director said it's not a reward. It's for you to see how things are going, for us to see how the, you know, staff works with people, how they treat them or in everything that you do going entry and exit. And the Sheriff's Department is there and whoever is giving the event, they're heavily there. And it's the symphony of the majority of them. So, I have certainly enjoyed that. The grounds are clean. It's just a beautiful spot to be on that hill and the stage and all. And I keep choosing boats as they go by. It's, it's just a peaceful, lovely thing. And I wanted to let you all know that the Sound of Music will be done, the play. And they're practicing, I guess, all day and all night. And it will be the Symphony Orchestra and the Ghostlight Theater and some local community people. So, that show is a family show. I can't wait to go and sing. Be something in there that we know. So, I wanted to let you all know that it's a great thing to do. Oh, and I attended the viewing yesterday for Commissioner Wentzall. Thank you.
Thank you for that update from all of you. Much appreciated for the work that we all do in our districts and for the county as a whole. I do have just a couple of brief things that I wanted to do as an update based on the presentation that we had for broadband. I wanted to also let everyone know here and to the public that the MyHigh Office, which is the Michigan High Speed Internet Office, has released their draft version of their digital equity plan, which is required for, for federal funding. And so, it's an eighty-one page document that you can go, you can read through, you can see what the priorities are for the next five years from the state for the funding and enter in your comments. I'm certain this will be something that BCBIT will take on as a topic to consider. And then the other thing to Commissioner Ox's question about the Affordable Connectivity Program. It is something that the FCC offers. You can go to the FCC.gov website, type in ACP, and you can find out all of the qualifications of that program, just at high level. You qualify if you are on any type of assistance, whether it be SNAP, if you have Section Eight housing, anything along that line. Also, if your income is at two hundred percent or below the federal poverty guidelines, you qualify for this program as well. So, just wanted to touch in on that. So, that's my update. And now, I will turn it to the Administrator if he happens to have an update for the board.
Yeah, some members of the board. We briefly talked about A two three zero, seven two six three, potentially having that on today's agenda. We are not going to be ready to do that. We will be working on it over the coming days. There's a lady in the back of the room that has scrambled and that thank you for getting a draft ready, but we just need some more time. Okay, so that's item one. Item two is, is the no fun topic. One year ago today, Mac Isom was killed doing his job. And it's, it's still a pretty awful memory. And I think that the positive that has come out of that is just seeing the absolute commitment to teamwork. So, there's a lot of people in this building that came together to assist Mac's family, to assist the Road Department, to work through all of the reporting requirements. There's too many people to name. The sheriff dropped what he was doing and just made it a point to be there. The workers at the Road Department just lived it for days and days and days. And ultimately, I'm coming back to this. Port of Commissioners opted to cancel the meeting the following day just to allow more time. Port of Commissioners, just prior to that accident, had approved engaging Pine Rest on an employee assistance program. I still just want to say thanks to the board for taking those actions. I think that the immediate cancellation allowed staff to huddle and just talk through what had happened. The engagement of Pine Rest for the employee assistance program, I think, provided a lot of benefit. And hope we never have to use that benefit in that way again. But it's, it blows me away that it's been a year. And I just wish nothing but condolences to Mac's family and friends. I'll stop there.
Thank you for those comments.
Yep.
I had similar things that I was gonna state as well. And so, I'm glad that you articulated them so nicely. Thank you. Appreciate it. So, with that, we come to that point in our agenda for general public comments. Anything under the sun, two minutes or less. We ask that you state your name and jurisdiction or title.
Hi, I'm Laura Freely. I'm your Registered Ds, I'm from Lakey Township. Just as a reminder, we will be opening to the public on July twenty-sixth at ten o'clock. It's just our office. The county building still opens at this normal time. We're working through a server upgrade and just needed a little extra time to make sure we get through our testing. The server upgrade will affect the website the prior evening, so Tuesday evening from five to eight. So, if you have any questions or concerns, feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Elter Hager, Township. Let me make a suggestion about your resolutions. I suggest why don't you number them? Then when somebody has a question about the resolution, we wouldn't have to go through all of them to find out which one you're talking about. What's it take? Number one, all the way? The numbers are, I'm about to run the floor, I guess, just not. So, that's my suggestion. Another one is, when we have presentations, you guys are shutting us off. No, there aren't about three or four of us in here. You'd like to question that person too. I should not have to wait till the end. Now, where is that guy? I got a couple of questions for him too. Is he sitting here? You want to make him sit here until we get our turn to talk? No, our two minutes of democracy or whatever you want to call it. I think that's an insult too. I told you about that before. Another thing is, this morning, I was out at Lincoln, North Lincoln. That's where I go to exercise. And we had about, probably about eighty-five, ninety people in the gym today for a nine o'clock class. This resistance exercise. You did, there was about seventy, eighty, but today I almost ran out of chairs. So, what I'm saying is, like I talked about the last time, the funding is unfair. No, that's probably the largest out of the seven that we have here. And we've contributed more money than anybody else. For every dollar we send in, we get about fifty cents back if it's that. And some of these other ones, you know, they put in a dollar, they get two or three bucks back. Now, is that fair? What I think you should do is find out how many people live in that district and divide it by the number of people, not just the number seven. Now, third grade math. That's the easy way out for you. So, what I suggest, tell them to take a look at it and make it fair, make it democratic.
Two minutes, sir. Thank you.
We appreciate your comments, Mr. Poulter. Are there any other public comments at this time?
Hi, my name is Dustin. I'm currently taking a fifteen minute break, so I'm a private citizen. I just wanted to touch on something that Commissioner Majerik had mentioned earlier about the retail sales of alcohol and tobacco to minors. As a former retail employee, I wanted to mention to the Commissioners and kind of congratulate you all on, on how Marion County handles training in that regards. I think this is the first county. I think this is the first county that I have worked in as a retail employee that actively extended training on how to identify, you know, expired licenses and how to identify minors and everything during the sales that I did not actively receive offers when working in Kent and Newago Counties, for example. So just great job, everyone, on that. Thank you. Oh, and I currently live in Benton Charter Township, so.
Thank you, Dustin. Dustin, we also need your last name for record.
I thought I said it. My last name is Iams. That's I-A-M as in Mary, S is in Sam.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your comments. All right, so any other public comments at this time? Hearing none, unless a net's getting out. All right, so then we move on in the agenda for other business. As the Administrator stated, we won't have that resolution for consideration for this week. I do appreciate staff trying to get that over the finish line. And we will look forward to reviewing that for next week's meeting. Next item is just announcements of reminders. I know of none. Do you have any, Brian? Okay, no announcements or reminders. And so at this point in time, we stand adjourned until next week. Thank you.